Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On Cory? Alright, well, I would like to, um, got some special presentation anyways, I'd like to make an announcement on tonight's meeting. Paul on there? Um, Paul not on yet? Okay, so right now he's absent. Okay, um, tonight we have, um, on the agenda, um, planning commission appointment. Due to the interviews not being complete, I would like to table this until, um, well, I'd like to make a date on that. Is any council questions because the interviews I did not get completed and there's some other information that I need to get from some of the interviewers. So if there is any questions. And I would like to.
Are you gonna re-recruit?
Huh?
Were you gonna re-recruit?
And yes, and open it up for recruitment also in the process because of, because of the extended time, we'll, we'll open it back up to recruitment. The dates we need to pick on that would be, um, well, how about if we, it's October 19th is our next. Get that meeting now, close, we close recruitment. On. Yeah, we are the 15th. Let's say if we close recruitment on the, yeah, something like the 22nd, I think that'd be good, close recruitment on the 22nd. And then our November 3rd, is that where we're at? Move your hand, or November 2nd, bring it back, November 2nd.
Continue it to a date certain.
Yes, continue to November 2nd.
It wouldn't be tabled, it's continued.
Continued, yes, correct, correct. And for the applicants that did apply already, your application, you don't need to reapply on anybody that's already applied. That's already taken, I already got the applications. And like I said, I want to take and have some more personal interviews with all the applicants, so. What's that, I'm sorry? That's, um, the applications for planning commission, I'm sorry, that's what the, I don't know, I must have not said that, I'm so sorry. So yes, on new business on seven, C, it's approval or denial appointments of application applicants for a four-year term of Warricke Planning Commission. And that was supposed to be a decision-making that I was supposed to do tonight, but I did not have a chance to go through all the interviewers and have a one-on-one conversation with them, so I wanted to do that, so that's what the next step is. Alright, any other questions unless there's any other objections to that, I didn't hear from Joan, Joan? Councilman Freeman?
Can you hear me?
A little bit.
I can hear you, I can hear you.
Is that? Councilman Freeman, that I tabled that and continue it on, on November 2nd.
Yes, that's, that's fine with me.
Okay, great, thank.
Very much.
It's fine with me.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, great. And Paul's not here as of right now, so it's, that's, alright, great, thank you, I appreciate that. So I want to make sure I do, um, proper interviews. What's that, I'm sorry? Um, I don't, do we need a motion or matters, it's just a consensus?
American can continue it despite consensus.
Yeah, just a consensus then. Alright, well then we will go to, um, and the three public comments, this is a time for public comments regarding issues or matters not on the agenda, still within the jurisdiction of the Warricke. All the comments period is not attended as a question and answer period or conversations with council or staff. Councilmen, council members when recognized by the mayor may ask questions of presenter, but no action may be taken in city council during this public comment section in the meeting, except to direct staff to prepare, report, or place on a future agenda. If you're here to speak, speak from the podium, please state your name for record, providing for your documents. Please address the council as a whole, if you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies, please limit your remarks to five minutes. Alright, we'll open this up to the public for public comments, please.
Don Marie Autry, um, I have a few things. That I wanted to go over. And first of all, I wanted to address the city treasurer is, um, should be an elected position. It is, but it should not be, sorry, it should not be an elected position.
Treasure.
Because the public doesn't know who is. You know, uh, uh, right for their job, you know, if we got someone in there who did not believe in taking grants. We would be in trouble, fast. And there are people like that, so it needs to be in-house, not put to the public, they don't know, we don't know. And, um, and then the other thing is, the planning commission should be an elected position, all of those positions should be elected. Because it's not fair for five people to say, the planning commission for the city. You know, this person or that person, no, they shouldn't be, it should be, um, the people should have the say in who is on the planning commission of their town. And another thing is, the mayor should be an elected position. So that the whole town says, yes, this is our mayor by choice, not by, and it also gets rid of the contention between all the people sitting here. You know, absolutely.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Don Marie, appreciate it. Yes, please.
Do you know of any other cities who elect?
I do not. So all the ones that you've served on, they've all been appointed? Yes. Oh, really? Okay, that's interesting.
I, there may be elected planning commissioners in huge, uh, cities, but I, I know of no small cities, and I'm only familiar with smaller cities.
Oh, okay.
What was the first position she talked?
The, it was the treasurer.
Treasurer.
It should not, she's asking not to be put in as elected position, but in-house. So you think, it's interesting, no question.
Yes. So you're, you're saying that the city council should appoint the treasurer, just like they did the last time we. For the city clerk?
Yeah.
We took that off election and appointed the city clerk?
Everyone who is running the city, who absolutely knows who's qualified and who's not.
Yeah.
Because you get a bunch of cats in a bag, and you might pull out one who doesn't believe in, you know, getting grants from the city. And then how are we gonna pay for stuff?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Don Marie, appreciate it, much appreciate it. I think it's something.
And also, just because no other city has, have elected planning commission, doesn't mean that it's not correct.
Absolutely.
You want to do some research on that, not just say, no other city has.
No, no, we're not, I'm sure he's gonna look into it for us, so, thank you, much appreciate it. Just do public comments.
Public comment, if I might please, and the lady just triggered a thought. How many of you have ever considered separation of powers? As a constitutional scholar from Hillsdale University. You are an unconstitutional body. You are operating under administrative law, the current system we have now. You do not have separation of powers as the constitution outlines. All I'm saying is food for thought.
Yep.
Because you really need, you, I don't know if you should be the groundbreakers or not, but you should consider, as she said, some elected positions and some not, but do it under a constitutional framework. No, no, go ahead. It was it on?
Is it on?
It's on.
Okay.
Oh, you wanted me off? That's all I had to say.
Alright, thank you, Tony. Any other public comments? Okay. Great. And then we will move on to number five, which is consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine, non-controversial, and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion, or a member of the public wishes to comment on an item. A, approval ratifications of payments issued from August 30th, 2021 through September 12th, 2021. B, approval of minutes of regular meeting held on September 7th, 2021. C, approval of minutes of special meeting held on September 8th, 2021. D, adopt a resolution of the city council by the city of Warricke, appointing representatives to the board of directors at small organized risk effort score. E, continuation of urgency ordinance number 855 COVID-19. F, continuation of urgency ordinance number 864 fireworks. And G, waive full text readings of all ordinances on the agenda, ordinances shall be introduced and adopted by title only. Alrighty, where are we at here? Anybody want to have any questions? Any comments from the council? Okay. Then. We still have, just John, still on there still?
Yeah.
See her on there? Okay.
I'm here.
Alright.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Uh, we can't hear Debbie, Debbie, is your microphone on?
Yes.
Now it is. Now can you hear?
Better? Can you hear me, Councilmember Freeman?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. I would like to move that we accept everything is presented on 5A through G.
Councilman Middleton, I will second the motion.
Motion and a second, I will do rule call there. Joan? Smith Freeman?
Hi. Hi.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Still, is he still absent? Okay, he's absent. Corey Middleton?
Hi.
Debbie Barrett?
Hi.
And I, Duane K. Alright, so move forward. Alright, now we are off to number six, which is old business, discussion possible action, environmental restoration strategy and authority, we have Tony and Tisa.
Welcome.
Thank you. Are we on or off?
I think you're on.
Okay.
Joan, can you hear Tony?
Pardon?
I was asking Joan if she can hear you.
I can. Oh, yes, I can hear, I'm just fine.
Okay, great.
Uh, because the camera is the other way, I want to make sure this gets on the camera.
Yes.
And then I'm going to explain it to you guys. But first, to the issue at hand. I was here previously requesting that you write a letter, I'm, I'm gonna do this for the public benefit case.
Yes, please.
Uh, involving yourself and becoming a member of the, as it's known, the federal's drought relief working group. And the reason I came and asked you guys to become a part of it is I believe it's critical because you know more than I do that the state's gonna come down with some mandates on, um, rationing. So, I don't believe this city needs to be under those mandates because Fall Creek is a water supply known as primary water that will not go dry. It doesn't come from snow melt or groundwater, it comes from the mantle in the earth. And that is an inexhaustible supply. But, the allocation of the amount of cubic feet of water per second that is allocated for use, we have a smaller part than the rest of the capital parties that have that allocation. So we need to protect that, and I know you're aware of that, I don't mean to be redundant, I'm sorry.
Like I said, you need to.
So anyway.
Save this for the public also, so.
Yeah, I'm to kind of bring them up to speed a little bit.
Absolutely.
Now. Regarding water and that, and this, this issue of being part of the drought. You also have authority under state law, Title VII, land planning. The particular code, 65,300.7, 65,000, 030. Which states that the state government has to coordinate with local government in all issues relying regarding to land and land use, which includes water. So you have a statutory authority to be in control of negotiations under the state and federal statutes. And if you want an explanation of that, I can, I have one extra copy left, I don't know, I believe I gave it to everybody last time. It was a, um, it was a white paper that I, a legal opinion that I was asked to write by the Department of Interior and the California Fish and Game, particularly Bob Stover, remember when he was the head of Fish and Game? In the negotiations we had when I was representing Copco Lake Fire Protection District on the issues of dam removal, and Ken Salazar was the Secretary of Interior at the time. I'd like to believe that our negotiations, which was over 10 years ago, actually, stalled the dam removal because the federal government, including Department of Justice, walked away from the negotiations. Oh, shoot, I thought I had a, uh, copy of the, which would explain it to you a little better, I'm sorry. Anyway, let's get back to the drought issue letter, I am hoping that you guys would want to still do that. To see if you're still willing to join, the city of Montague has done it, the, uh, Montague Irrigation District has done it, the Copco Lake Fire Protection District has done it, they have all been, become part of the group. And I think it's important that the city also become part of the group, to have a say in drought issues. And that's why I'm back here tonight.
Awesome.
I didn't mean to get off track, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're good. Did you have some more stuff you wanted to present?
No, oh, okay, I wanted, this newspaper, Siskiyou Daily News, our local paper, Debbie may remember this, she may have been here again, I don't really know. Don't remember, were you here in 99?
Yes.
I don't know if you remember this issue. This was the, uh, the publisher at the time, I think was Andrus or Andrus. He took time to take the entire second section of the newspaper, June 11th, 1999, to warn the public. Particularly in Siskiyou County. That Clinton, President Clinton, had signed the biodiversity treaty. This is not makeup, this is not conspiracy theory, this actually happened. And what you see here in color, red and yellow, it's hard to see the little black dots, but you can't live in the red and yellow. Siskiyou County is designated 100% human free. Nobody can live here, including the Indians. And this is the entire United States that was under this treaty, if it hadn't been for one person in the senate that discovered it and they voted it down, it would have become law. But it's being implemented incrementally, little by little, on policy being pushed by the United Nations. And that's what's behind this dam removal, it's one of the little parts of the puzzle. And the water issues with us, it's all part of it. And if you do your research, you'll find out how bad this biodiversity treaty is. I probably have one of the only copies left from the newspaper. They've been trying to suppress this a great deal. So what, all I'm saying is, this is, this is a very serious issue, I'm not trying to scare anybody. I'm just trying to make you aware that what's going on in our political arena today. And that we're at the forefront for the northwestern part of the, this biodiversity treaty. And that's why they've been pushing so hard on us in Siskiyou County. And one of the reasons why the fires have been let burn is it pushes people out of the rural areas. Be a lot of people won't go back. Insurance companies will prevent that. By rates. Anyway, I've said enough, I didn't mean to get so political, I'm sorry. Let's go back to the drought, I hope you, that this body will see its way clear to join that group, issue, write that letter to become a cooperating agency. And why a cooperating agency, I won't go into the statutes again, I did it before. As a cooperating agency, you have statutory authority that you don't have as a city. You can apply to be in the group as a city, that's fine. But if you do it as a city, you will not have the statutory power that you would have as a cooperating agency. So that's my recommendation and why I, again, am here tonight. So I, I hope that you will consider it, and.
So before you step down from the podium, I know there's, I'm sure there's some more questions from council, um, who wants to, anybody having questions?
I think Councilmember Freeman had information.
Her handle? Yeah, Joan, are you there?
Can you hear us, are you there, Joan?
Did we lose her? John?
I guess we lost her, huh?
She is online and unmuted.
And away from the microphone.
Oh, boy. So, a couple of questions I got for you, Tony, you said you got some other cooperating agencies, uh, Montague.
City of Montague, uh, Montague Irrigation District, and the Copco Lake Fire Protection District. I've been trying to set up a meeting with the, uh, Lake Chastina Community Services District because they qualify also under the statute, if they want to, and I have been having a hard.
She's saying, sorry, Joan is saying that she is trying to stop, since does Arthur have any muted, she says she's trying to talk, she, she said she can hear us, but she's unmuted.
She's unmuted.
Sorry about that, go ahead, I'm just trying, she texted me saying, why can't you guys hear me? Well, good, I'm sorry.
No, well, we need, I mean, yeah, she's in the middle of something, so we need to have her, just, just second, Don Marie. So, anyways, back to the, the other cooperating agencies.
She say that, she just can't speak for some reason.
Huh, we can get her on teleconference, we have to too, um. You said you have to, have you, I didn't, I didn't see any of those, did you send that out to us, or I didn't? Uh, cooperating agencies, um, the cooperating, other cooperating agencies, because I didn't, I didn't see anything on that, but it was, did you?
I have copies of their letters.
Okay.
Sign?
Pardon?
Sign?
Not signed ones, but the copies I prepared for them, you can contact them, I'm not, I wouldn't tell you this, if I wasn't, I wouldn't be lying about it.
Right.
We're just asking if the.
Yeah, I just, I didn't.
But you need, oh no, you need documentation, that's true, but you can, uh, you can ask them for a signed copy if you want one.
Hello?
Oh, there you are. Wow, now we can hear you.
Came in loud and clear that time.
Okay, so we're going through questions.
Haven't stopped since I left home.
So we're go, we're going through questions right now for Tony, um, I, I had.
I got them on there, I had them on the, on the speakerphone in there, and now they can't, thank you.
Joan, we can hear you.
Joan?
Oh, oh, hello, you can hear me now, go ahead, I'm listening.
We can hear you now.
Of course you can, I could hear you all before, but you couldn't hear me, I was going, hello, hello, hello. I mean, we're not listening, or it wasn't, it wasn't.
Definitely hear you now.
Okay.
Nice and clear.
Loud and clear, okay, I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you're good, you're good, we're asking, like I said, we're, we're at the point, we're asking Tony questions.
Okay.
And I asked him of, about the other cooperating agencies, I don't know if you heard me ask him that, and the sign.
Yes, yes, I did. Yes, I, I spoke recently with the mayor of Montague, uh, Tiffany Lorenzini. Uh, actually, she was, um, on the call too, and, um, she was on her way to a meeting, but anyway, um, she said that, uh, that you, Anthony, Tony, you had been to their meeting and that they were interested, but they had not received the letter back from you. That has to go to their attorney for approval first, and also they want to send it through the, um, the Montague Water Conservation District first, and when everybody is on the same page, and if their attorney approves it, then they would sign it, but they have not done it yet.
Okay, FERC is not involved in this process, Joan?
No, no, not FERC, no, that, she said that they had asked you to send them the information in writing in the letter, and then they would send it to their attorney for approval.
Oh, okay.
And they had not gotten back any information yet from you.
Okay. Um, okay, that's, okay, so you, I guess you haven't got that.
I haven't heard that.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Well, I think they're waiting, they're just waiting to hear from you, Tony. And so you might, you might give them a, a call over at, yeah, City Hall in Montague.
Yeah, I was under the impression, um, one of the Montague City Council people, uh, who's a takes care of pest control in my place, he said that they had approved it, but I guess he didn't know what he was talking about.
Real interesting, of course, I guess if they, well, if they would have proved it, they would have got ahold of you, um, obviously. Right, so they obviously didn't, yeah.
Anyway, um.
That's interesting.
It's not on there.
Copco Lake, Copco Lake did, you can talk to, um.
I can't, I can't find it.
The fire chief is in charge of the fire, the board of directors.
Mute her.
They signed one and mailed it off. And the Montague Irrigation District did also.
Okay.
So there's two for sure.
For sure.
We're still waiting then, you guys to decide, and for Montague to decide.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay, um, I know it was, Joan, did you have any other questions that you were gonna ask, Tony?
Um, no, I, I think that, um, you have all the, uh, the other information from our attorney.
What, I'm sorry?
You, can you hear me?
Tony?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Okay, yeah, the information from the attorney that, uh, that everyone has, so.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay.
What did your attorney say about the cooperating agency status?
Well, obviously he has concerns about, you know, um, water stipulations and whatnot, too, um, I don't want to put that. Um, having part of a cooperating agency like that, it might have some stipulations on, uh, some fragile water rights of some sort, so. That's what he is concerned.
He doesn't understand the statute, I'm sorry.
Did you want to say something to me?
Yes, please, Don.
Yeah. What is it?
What's that?
What was the question?
What, what, because you reached a question about Don, he said. No, it's the attorney.
Hey, Don. He stated that you did not understand the stipulation regarding the water and what he's presenting and what we have going on with Fall Creek and our water rights, he's thinking you don't understand the stipulation, so that's what he was saying. Okay. Which stipulation is that?
I'm sorry.
We've got a lot of stipulations on Fall Creek, what stipulation are you referring to?
Okay, it has nothing to do with Fall Creek, this has to do with drought relief, Fall Creek is a totally separate issue. This, what I'm proposing has nothing to do with Fall Creek. Nothing to do with dam removal, nothing to do with the hatcheries proposed removal, it's a separate, entire, different. process instituted by Department of Interior and the Department of Agriculture. To what, put up a working group on drought issues.
Yeah, I, I listened to your presentation. I understand what you were, what you were saying and why you think that it's a separate issue. And having dealt with the situation for the last five to seven years. I can tell you that when we, as a city, who is protecting its water rights. Basically are viewed as being a partner with irrigators or other water users instead of just protecting our own water rights. There is an emotionality that is connected with that, that tends to cause our other people that we need to convince to cooperate with us to, to not cooperate with us. And so my feeling is that if we needed to be cooperating or what I would call coordinating parties with, we would be doing it in our own name, under our own signature. And our own thought processes representing ourselves as not being partners with any other agency that would cause us to be tainted in our negotiations.
Okay, I understand your concerns. You were not to, if you are a cooperating agency, you are not a partner. You are merely in a different, how should I put it?
No, I understand. I, I used to give classes on this. I, I had lectured in, in Texas and in Denver about this stuff. I get it. What I'm saying is that you are asking us to join with other people like irrigators who would be our partners. If we were to join up with you. And so what I'm saying is that if the city wanted, felt that it was necessary to enter into a coordinating or cooperating entity status with the, the water board. That we would, we should do that on our own and not with any other parties. Who might be saying things or doing things that we don't agree with or that might prejudice our interests.
Okay. All right. I get it. I understand. That makes sense. This is not really a partnership. You're joining a group. You would be a, a separate entity. You would probably consult with the others on issues of drought within Siskiyou County. But it's not a partnership. It's just a coalition. There's no partnership intended in any way, shape or form structurally.
I understand how you look at it. I just know how everybody else looks at it.
Don saying is the perception of the, the groups that we would be partnering, partnering with would make us look like we're partnering with them on other things too.
Well, you can't control what other people think. You have to decide whether you want to stand up for yourself or not. That's what it amounts to.
You're welcome.
All right. Open it. I'm gonna open it up for public comments. I know Don Marie or.
I just wanted to know if those other groups were on the same water as us. And then because he brought up the water, our water was. So and then he says it's not a water, art, a fall creek issue. It is.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So bring up, is there any other public comments at this point in time?
Oh, yeah. One more thing. We should have just said, it's a hard no.
Okay. Thank you for that, that comment. Anyways, any other public comments? Nope. Okay. Well, I'm gonna open it back up to the council and what the council's recommendation is. And would you unmute Joan, please? I, absolutely. You can go first.
I guess where I stand, in my opinion, is after, he's been in front of us several times. And with the advice of our legal counsel, listening to him. I just don't want to, I, my opinion, and I just think we cannot poke the bear and jeopardize anything with what we have going on with the water, the dams. He says it's separate. I don't see a separation attaching our name to it. It's gonna be very dangerous. And I think we just need to make a motion to say we do not want to participate and end it tonight with a no, in my opinion.
Good. That's great. I'll go to Joan. Joan Smith Freeman?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Um, I agree with Cory. I think it's really important for us to listen to our attorney. And I know that he's well aware of all of the water issues that we're dealing with and make certain that we maintain our water rights. And, and, and so I, I would really listen to our attorney and, and stay the course that we're doing right now and not, not sign that letter.
All right. Great. Thank you, Joan. Debbie Bear?
I agree with everything that's been said. I think we, our number one priority is the water rights for Wairika. That is our job. And I would not want to put anything in jeopardy in negotiating with the same people that come to the table. So I agree.
Well, then I'll make my public comment too. What the attorney, you know, stated especially towards the end there, the perception is kind of a huge thing when we're trying to retain our water rights. And if we're in the, on the, you know, at the table with individuals that are trying to remove the dams and trying to do all that, which is everybody's personal feeling, opinion. And I, like I said, I've said this before, that I'm not for dam removal. And I've said that before. And that's my personal opinion. But our first and foremost, like we've been stated, is our water rights and retaining our water rights. And that's all that, that this is our job as council is to preserve our water rights. And so I agree that, that we need to focus on that first and foremost is retaining our water rights and whatever that takes to make sure that we retain that. So it's a tough call in a lot of cases, because like I said, your personal beliefs sometimes as, as a councilman kind of interferes with those things. And like I said, as a personal belief, I believe that the, the dam should stay. And that's my personal beliefs. And I've say, stated that and I'm not afraid and ashamed to say that, that there again, it's my focus is on retaining water rights first and foremost. And that's what we'll do. So anyways, yes, Mr. Milton.
And just add one. And by all means, Mr. Antizo put a lot of time in it. I don't want to discredit the time he's done in his research on his own time. I don't want to take away from that. And, but it is concerning to me. If, when somebody is up here giving a presentation and supposed to be professional and, but they walk out when they don't want to hear what our attorney has and discredit his experience bothers me right then and there to associate with a group that can't handle an opinion from our legal team. And sitting up here as a body, when they walk out like that, it really is disheartening. He's, but I'm not gonna take away from his time. But that does bother me and I don't want to associate with a group that they're gonna be radical and then just get mad. And then we're City of Wairika and our names on there, every single one of us. And that's what we're gonna be associated with. So I just want to add that, but I want to thank him for his time. He's spent a lot of time and research on his own time. I mean, it takes a lot. But I don't like when the present presenter walks out after he doesn't want to hear what our attorney says. And so that, I just wanted to add that. I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's, stuff needs to be stated. Yes. And he has spent a lot of time on this. And, and Tony Tiso is very much for, you know, saving our water rights too. It's not that he's not, it's, I know for a fact, but he also obviously would like to retain the dams and all that too.
These. I hope he continues, continues on their path of what they're trying to do by all means.
So at this stage, I would like to ask the council, because this is discussing possible actions. So we don't have to take any action, but I'm asking, does the council want to take any action? In other words, do we want to sign this? I just want a consensus on what, how we feel. I'll start off, I'll start off with Joan. What is your consensus on this?
My consensus is to follow our attorney's recommendations and, and not sign on with the potential coalition. I think that it's the, as Councilmember Baird and Councilmember Middleton said, I think, should I turn on my, so you can see me? Okay. I, I think that it's really important for us to protect our water rights. That's what our constituents. People in the city of Wairika are depending on that water. So I think that we need to be really, really careful and follow our attorney's recommendations, which would mean that we would not sign on the letter or sign on with the coalition. And I know that Mr. Antizo has studied this and put a lot of time and energy into it, and I respect that. But at this time, I don't think it's the proper thing for us to do.
All right. Thank you, Joan. Councilman Milton?
Well, I think it's pretty much what I stated before. I just don't want to move forward and no, I don't think it's in our best interest. Okay.
I choose to follow the direction of our attorney and wish Mr. Antizo well with his other presentations to other entities.
Thank you much. And I, Dwayne Kakes agrees with that, that we should not move forward on signing this. So we haven't. All right. Discussion over. All right. And we will move on to now number seven, new business discussion, possible action. Police department approval exemption of the, of city nepotism policy to allow hiring of police officer candidate. This is our chief. Chief Gilman.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
So you've all seen the, seen the orders. So the issue I have is we're, we've been doing a great job filling the department. We've been getting some awesome officers and we're getting there. We have a few openings left and we have a handful of candidates for these few openings. One of the candidates is a number one candidate. He is someone that, that I would love to see stay here. Somebody who's a local that'll be here. The problem is his mom works at the police department. So we're back in this nepotism issue. She does, they don't meet any of the front criterias. There's no supervision. They don't work side by side. There's no direct contact. She is a secretary. She's my secretary and he is testing for a patrolman position. It comes back down to the wordings of the locale, which we talked about the last time with the Fishers. Does locale mean building, city, county? That's where we get into this again. So my proposal was to allow me to make the exemption, which is allowed by the policy. If you all would agree with that, to start a background on him and see if he's as good a candidate as we think he is. And so that's what I'm asking for is an exemption to the nepotism policy to bring on a quality candidate.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Short and sweet.
Short and sweet. I love it. I love it. So councilman comments, concerns?
Councilmember Baird speaking. I have no problem with it at all. And I know that the chief will handle it. If something comes up, he'll take care.
Cory, have any comments?
I like your new shirt though.
It's like a pool.
But I have no comments regarding the matter.
Joan Smith Raymond, do you have any comments, questions?
Oh, I'm, I trust the chief and I think, I think he's able to handle it. It sounds like the situation will work out fine. And we do know that we need, you know, we need good employees. And it sounds like you've got good employees set there. And so I don't have any problem with, with that exemption.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. And I want to make a comment. Yes. Just thank you for all the hard work you've been doing since you've been on board. You've, you've done above and beyond anything I've ever seen. So it's just thank you for all the hard work and, and just keep up, keep up the good work. So anyways, any public comments? I'll open up for public comments real quick. If there's anybody that has any public comments. Nothing on, on Zoom or anything, Arthur? Okay. Well, then close it for public comments and we'll open it back up to the council and the recommendation of the council.
I'd like to, this is Councilmember Baird. I'd like to make a motion if I may.
Absolutely.
I'd like to move to approve exemption to city nepotism policy to hire, to allow hiring of police officer candidate Nick Persing.
Councilwoman Middleton, I will second the motion.
All right. Great. We have a motion in a second. And I will do roll call. Joan Smith Freeman?
Aye.
Cory Middleton?
Aye.
Paul McCoy's absent still. Debbie Baird?
Aye.
And I, Dwayne K. Guy. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. So I think it's one of those things you probably should just stay right there. Jump into the next one, which is seven B, discussion possible action, police department authorized purchase of new rifles, replacing prior surplus purchased rifles, which I think are probably even surplus would probably be the purchase of the last ones. The existing ones that you have are probably, well, you're gonna explain that.
It wasn't even a purchase. The current rifles we have are military surplus. They're extra rifles that through the 1033 program, which I was a part of back as a patrolman many, many years ago. And we're still using the same ones. So they are typical AR-15, M16 style rifles. So we've talked about this before. This has come up at a couple of meetings a few months ago. And I've got the quotes on the new guns. It was actually very reasonable. I was surprised at the quote on the rifles. So my proposal was to get eight of them with sites that are capable at nighttime. The military surplus ones we have, if you know anything about the assault type weapons, they have a carry handle which has little iron peep sites. They don't work in low light situations. They're meant for fields daytime. We've tried mounting lights to them. We even tried mounting optics to them 15 years ago or so. And it wouldn't work because of the charge handle or the carry handle is so high that when you put them in a patrol car, they're always hitting the back of the cage. And we kept having sight problems where they'd go out of sight. So we just carry them with open sights now. And the guys honestly don't even deploy them because it's, it's more of a liability to even deploy them. So we've looked at other options. Other agencies have gone to newer rifles with like red dot sites for low lights. These help us in school shootings, Walmart shootings, something like that. It's even for indoor. So you can see in low light situations or weird reflective lights like school lights, things like that. So we looked at the proposal for eight of the weapons with these sites on them. The bid that came in when I first got this was for 11,400 something. I had him re-up the bid like I said in the proposal and it only changed by like $10. So the, the total bid was for 11,455. And that's for the eight rifles with the eight sites. And everything else we have is universal to it. Magazines, holders, brackets. We already have everything that's, that we purchased over the years will still work for these as far as putting them in the cars, all that. So the only thing I'm asking for is the rifles and the sites.
Awesome. Awesome. Okay. I'll open it up to council, council. Have any questions, comments?
I, I think you should shop for a buy one, get one free. Or SNH stamps or something. Seems really reasonable actually for the cost. And I'd rather have you guys out there with items that you can trust.
Well, that's what I look at too. Yes. The liability, just like you said, I mean, why have a rifle in your, in your possession that you really can't use? And if you're afraid of using it because it might be a liability issue, it could potentially cost the city, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars. So to me, this is a cheap, a lot cheaper insurance and policy in a sense. So that's why I look at is the liability issue, a huge liability issue. So on the old ones at least. Mr. Milton?
So this might be a dumb question, but why 11 if we have 15 like officers, say 15 by 11?
Eight.
I'm sorry. Oh, I was looking at $11,000.
So the eight, we basically set up, I didn't want to go for too much money.
Okay.
I would love to issue every officer a weapon, but I was afraid I was gonna get too expensive. So I have enough outfit the cars.
Okay.
So eight will give me one for each unit. So when an officer comes in and grabs a unit, we'll have a rifle.
So it wasn't a dumb question.
You want to double the order?
I didn't give myself enough credit here. So one for each car. Okay. Perfect. So I guess my, my question is like, wait a minute, we have. So one for each car. Okay. Perfect. So I guess my, my question, like, wait a minute, we have.
My question in conjunction to that is what if one of them goes down and, um, uh, one of the rifles goes down and you don't have a replacement for it? Would, I mean, is that, could that be an issue?
No, not really. So there's enough to outfit the cars in emergency. Say the whole department showed up, we'd have eight patrol cars on the scene. So we have eight rifles. On a typical shift, when we get to our hypothetical full staffing, which hopefully will happen in a few months. We've had a hard time with that. But typically at the most, we'd only have four cars on patrol all the time. So basically there's only going to be four in service at a time on a good, on a full day.
That makes sense. Awesome. All right. Joan Smith Freeman, do you have any comments, questions?
Excuse me. I am having a little bite to eat. We're not going to starve like we did last night. Um, so, um, I agree with the comments that have been said. I want our officers to be safe. Um, and it sounds like this is a reasonable ask. There's older military rifles that are in use now. I think we need to have our, our police officers well-equipped to defend themselves and defend the city.
Uh, open it up to the public for public comments. Is there any public comments? Yes, Lorenzo?
We'll still retain those. It's a ten thirty three program. So we can't disperse them other than back to the military for destruction or for us to maintain until at some point they want them back. Yes, they'll remain in fleet. They'll remain in there. Yes.
Good question. Thank you. Awesome. Any other public comments, questions? All right. We'll close that part. Now we'll open it back up to council. Council, what is the recommendation of the council?
Councilman Corey Middleton, I will, um, make the motion to authorize the purchase of new rifles, replacing prior surplus purchased rifles for the police department.
Motion?
I'll second.
We will do roll call. Uh, Joan Smith Freeman?
Aye.
Corey Middleton?
Aye.
Debbie Baird?
Aye.
And Paul McCoy's absent still. So Duane Keg and I say aye. Absolutely. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I've said, please, no, keeping them safe is, and a citizen's safe is number one priority. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. How long have I been here? It's the first time I've seen him without a hat.
Well, you got half your hair. You gotta wear a hat.
Thank you, chief.
All right. Now we, while we tabled, uh, so now we are off to D, seven D, discussion possible action, public works, adopt a resolution authorizing city manager to award construction contract to SNL Group, Inc. For the East Lennox Street Waterline Replacement and Water Treatment Plant Filter Improvement Project in the amount of two million nine hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars for the base bid and to execute related documents. And this is Cindy. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. As you know, we went out to bid on the fifteenth. We got, I believe, three bids. I don't have my staff report in front of me. I'm sorry about that. We got three bids and this was the apparent low bidder. We have done preliminary due diligence and the city attorney has documents and everything to look at. And the goal here would be to have provisional approval from the council to go ahead and award to SNL Group Incorporated until the city attorney can finish his review and then we can award right away. And if you have any questions, I'm here.
Let's make a comment. I know, looked, uh, right at me on the city attorney part of it because I know I've been a big instigator of making sure that the city attorney looks at this. And I'm all for it. And thank you for making sure. And thank you, Dawn. Um, anyways, I'm going to open it up to the council and, uh, any comments, questions, concerns?
We've reviewed it over and over.
That's what I like to hear. Awesome. Joan Smith Freeman, do you have any comments?
Uh, I have a motion.
Okay.
And, uh, and if you're done with the comments.
Uh, just one quick second. I'm going to, I'm trying to keep it to where we can open it up for public comments too, real quick. And then you can, I'll address that. So, um, if that's the case, I will open it up for public comments. Is there any public comments out there? The cricket. So we're good there. So I will close it for public comments then and open it back up and go ahead. Joan Smith Freeman?
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make the motion, um, that we award, um, let's fiscal impact, I'm gonna award it to SNL Group of Reading for two million nine hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Because that is the low bid and, uh, and that's the appropriate thing to do.
Great. So we have a motion by Joan Smith Freeman.
I'll second.
We have a second by Debbie Baird. Roll call. Joan Smith Freeman?
Aye.
Corey Middleton?
Aye.
Debbie Baird?
Aye.
Paul McCoy's still absent and I, Duane Keg, aye. Thank you very much, Cindy. Okay. We are off now to, that's why Cindy's still standing.
I was all, I think she's next.
Discussion possible action, public works, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a construction contract to Advantage Paving and Excavating, um, Inc. For the twenty twenty one chip seal project in the amount of two hundred and twenty nine thousand nine hundred and ninety nine and ten cents. Wow, and ten cents. We had to have that in there. For the base price and execute related documents. Cindy, again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you know, we went out to bid on the sixteenth for the project. This is to pave or do chip seal on Campbell Sharps, the two Greenhorn parking lots and a parking lot at the wastewater treatment plant.
Good.
Advantage paving was the apparent low bidder. We've done preliminary research and believe it's appropriate to award pending city attorney approval. If you have any questions, I'm like.
Great. Okay. Well, opening up for councils.
Mayor, I have to admit, I'm really thrilled that a local got it.
Yes.
It's nice to see that happen every once in a while. So their numbers are
Yes.
in the game. And again, we've talked this one to death as well. So I'm good.
All good. All good. Any other councilman comments, questions? Okay. Well, open it up for public comments, questions, if there's any. Thank you.
There's, there's grant funding from the state water board for the East Lennox project. And the street and parking lot project is partially funded by, um, Senate Bill one, which is a cal- which is for streets and roads. No.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comments or questions? All right. Well, if there's a public comment part of it, we'll open it back up to council. Council, what's the recommendation of council?
Uh, Councilman Corey Middleton, I will make the motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a construction contract to Advantage Paving and Excavating Incorporated for the twenty twenty one chip seal project in the amount of two hundred and twenty two thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars and ten cents for the base bid and executed, execute related documents. And of course, pending on the review and finalization from our attorney. Mr. Kenyon?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. We have a motion in a second. I'll do roll call. Joan Smith Freeman?
I vote aye, but I just want to say that I really like that the ten cents is on there. Yes, I vote aye.
Okay. Corey Middleton?
Aye.
Debbie Baird?
Aye.
And Paul McCoy's still absent and I, Duane Keg, aye. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And of course she's, is that it? No more?
Nope.
Oh, come on, Cindy. Okay. Discussion possible.
She was getting out of there fast.
Adopt resolution to, to see, to, to the, shooting, I bought, resolution authorizing the city to seek proposals for the South Foothill Drive Cleanup Project and approving the supplemental appropriation for capital outlay of a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Okay.
As, as stated, yes, as stated in the report, um, this has been worked on for some time. And we recently received the, um, report from the engineers working on the project and what needs to be done to clean up the contamination that is on the city property. Um, you've seen that, uh, what this would do or the proposal is to actually remove the dirt and take it to a disposal site. The amount that's included here at twenty five thousand dollars is more than a hundred thousand estimated, but that's in case there are issues. Um, it could be more dirt. It could be less dirt, in which case the, it's anticipated that the price would change.
Right.
We won't know that. The dirt will be tested as excavated onsite.
Okay.
As a part of the prop, uh, proposal. Like the dirt goes to a site that will accept contaminated dirt. This does not include any estimate for bringing clean dirt back in to fill up the site. We'll bring that to you at a later time. We did ask Pace Engineering to give us some engineered estimates on how much it might cost to put dirt there, how much it might cost to asphalt the property, how much might cost the concrete, the property and put some other type of surface on top for that. But they were unable to provide that information by this meeting.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Anything else? Great. And I'll open up to council. I know we have some questions.
Yes, I'll start. I do have some questions. Um, I am not a hundred percent for this because I'm not sure that it wouldn't be more cost effective to encapsulate in one of the options that we have there. Uh, the less money we spend with any of these methods, the more we can spend on resolving in this same issue from, of course. So I do have, I would like to know more information about the other options.
About the other options. Okay.
About the other options. That's it.
Okay.
And I would be good with, uh, tabling this until we did have that information, but we've been working on it a while and I know you guys are anxious. So.
No. Um, and the other thing, I mean, if, if we did approve this, we don't have to do anything with this. So if those other options came in, if I'm correct, those other options came in and we chose to go that, down that road, we don't have to move forward on this. This is just, this is just retaining that money, correct?
Actually, this is to put this out to bid, to get a contractor to come do the, that's going to take a period of time to get those bids.
Right.
In that period of time, we should have the information, um, that you're talking about back and that can be shared with the council.
Yeah.
Okay. We won't do the work until after you've approved the contract uh, and authorize us to enter into an agreement with the contractor to do the work.
So I, basically this is just, this just speeds up the process. So when we get those other bids or get those other options, I should say, we can move forward in a, in a more rapid pace and direct.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Milton, have any questions, concerns?
No, I think that answers my question, actually.
Okay, perfect. Joan Smith Freeman, do you have some questions?
Thank you. I couldn't tell if you could see me waving and I put my hand up. So I'll take, hand up down now. Lower hand. Okay. Uh, so, uh, my question, uh, to staff is, uh, I see that Matt's on as well as Randy. My question is, I understand that there is a grant available through the EPA for cleanup. Um, and then it, and I think that the grant will cover the majority of the cleanup. Um, it would take a little bit longer, but it wouldn't come out of our general fund that way. So I was curious, Randy, Matt, have you guys looked into that?
The information that we've been provided at this time is that the Brownfield Grant, which was EPA grant, I think you're talking about, would only provide for the planning.
No, that's not the grant I'm talking about. That's phase, that's the phase one grant. There's a phase two grant that provides for cleanup money.
I, I don't know.
Okay. Well, that's something different then. Um, and you, you spoke with who on that?
Oh, I talked to, uh, the people that did our Brownfield, our original Brownfield grant for us. Uh, so that was Alex through, uh, EDC. Um, and they said, because I was lamenting the fact that our grant that we got, that we had assumed, and you know what happens when you assume, that it provided the funding for the cleanup. And they said, there is funding for cleanup, but it's a separate grant. It's not the phase one grant. It's called a phase two grant.
Okay.
And, and they're, they are looking into that for us. So, um, we just have to, uh, get more information.
Okay. So they, they are, you said they are looking into that?
Mm-hmm. They are. They, they contacted, uh, the EPA staff person that, uh, worked with them on our phase one. And he said, there's absolutely money available.
That, that's information.
Yeah, that's new information. So.
Did not have.
Yeah.
I just, I, I just found that out this week, Randy. I'm sorry. I didn't pass that on to you.
That's fine.
I would still recommend you go forward with this and we will check with the EDC and get that information and bring that back to you. Hopefully with the other options for the site.
Okay.
And I appreciate the heads up.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm great. Thank you, Joan, for looking into that. Appreciate that. So I think, yeah, I, I, this is my own opinion and actually, I'd like to really see us move forward on. I know I'm been really, um, vocal on this whole thing. So um, I would, you know, like to move forward and if it's speeding things up moving forward. Um, but we're not actually doing anything, but we, it's got to be opened up for bids anyways. And then we can change, we can change gears at that point in time. If we get some more information, but if it speeds things up and time is right now, the essence on this, um, urban campsite. Cause we've been delayed, 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 delayed on every avenue of this urban campsite and so many different avenues that I think, I feel that we should move forward, um, myself. Um, I would like to open it up for public comment at this point in time. Um, I'm sorry, we, we are going to have to start having people come down to the podium because it's not being recorded. I should have been more strict about this. I'm sorry. Because it, no one can hear. Joan can't hear when somebody's up in the background. Just us. Sorry.
My name is Lenita and, uh, I have some questions. What is the property location?
Location on the, on the urban campsite is what the foothill, what's the?
Four hundred, uh, South Foothill.
Four hundred South Foothill, yes.
What kind of contamination are you talking about?
Um, they're supposed to, I guess, from what I understand, that there's, um, minute, um, uh, lead in the ground, what I've been, what I've been told. Just very, very small traceable amounts, but they still have to deal with it.
And how dangerous it is for the properties around it?
And what about it?
How dangerous it is for the properties around.
Dangerous for them? Um, that, I don't know. We've never really addressed that. The Beacon of Hope has the shelter next door that they're working on. Um, but as far as the danger level, actually, as far as I, what I've been told, that even the lead that's in the ground is so minute that it, we could have probably uncovered it originally with something that would probably never hurt anything. But because of us doing the study on that, we have to do something about that to make it safe. So around as far as other, around there. As far as I've been told, it's, there's no, there's no debt risk at all for the, around the area.
See, I, I wonder how much that would be prejudicial for the properties that are being sold. Um, how detrimental would be when clients will come to see properties that are for sale in that area and looking at all that soil being removed and, uh, that would maybe increase the fear of the buyers to purchase on that area.
There would let them, sorry.
Increase the buyer's fear to buy.
Oh, fear to buy?
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause there, you, I know you have, uh, one listed there. So, yeah, absolutely. And I, I understand where you're coming from. Um, so. Yes, absolutely.
Because it's a light industrial area, the normal course of things would be to investigate any of that. That's, that should be a standard for realtor to do, whether they're representing the buyer or the seller. It has to go through some process just because of the zone that it's in.
And the prior uses.
See, our, our big thing on ours, and just to kind of put your mind to these on that, our big, uh, what I've been told that there was, uh, a gas station before the freeway was put in. And that's where the contaminants were coming from. And it's more specialized or specific to our location. And that's the reason why. And that's the reason why it's been so presented into our little area, not in the other, other areas.
And then if, if we're gonna do a cleanup on that site specifically, what is that site will be used for? Because that, right now, it's a city-owned property, is that right?
The one that we're talking about?
Yes.
The urban campsite that we've been talking about, yeah.
And then is that gonna be developed for any means, any, any development? We're gonna go there or just say cleanup for the sake of health issues?
For the homeless. It's just for the, urban campsite is a, a campsite for the homeless to, to stay.
Oh, okay, yes, I lost that.
Yeah. We're in, and actually, my statements here, and I might as well talk about it right now a little bit. Medford, we're kind of basing our design after, after Medford. Medford has an urban campsite that they've developed and I actually went up there and went through them, did a tour of that. And their urban campsite is actually really working real well on them. The outlining businesses around the urban campsite up there in Medford, it's out on Biddle Road. And it's, it's right next to the Ford dealership out on Biddle Road. And their urban campsite has been very productive. Law enforcement, with the recommendation of the law enforcement, that the individuals come into this urban campsite. And so it's a safe environment for people to stay for that are homeless. And it actually cuts down, they've proven it's cut down on crime rate. It's proven that it's cut down on emergency services as far as like the fire department, hospitals and all that stuff. So it's actually a really good investment for the community to help fight the homelessness issue in there. So that's what it's gonna be primary use for.
Right, now, it, it did occur to me that the building that I am selling right next to it could be an amazing asset to the city to improve the life of this urban campsite. So city could be scheduling a tour with me and we could go and take a look and maybe make it an, an offer to the owners and purchase this and the city will own that building as well. There is, it's a 21,000 square feet building. And the roof is amazing.
Yep, no, I know exactly that. And that's, that's something I, you know, that financially, something that, you know, I don't know where we're at on that part of it, so.
Just for the cleanup on this one is 125,000? For, just for the cleanup for this campsite?
Yes.
Plus building everything, when you have already in a structure? It's a, I don't know, just an idea.
And I like that, thank you. I appreciate that. No, thank you for that, though, much appreciate that. Awesome, okay, oh, Lorenzo?
Yeah, Lorenzo, love. The total encapsulation of the area, I, I think that would almost certainly kill the trees. Blacktop or even if you left a gap 10 foot away from the trees, you're gonna cover up all their root system.
Right.
Those trees would probably die. They're just too big to be, to have blacktop under them.
Yeah.
And if you move all this dirt out and you move builder in, what's gonna keep it from being a mud hole?
Well, it depends on type of dirt they bring back, you know, they can bring back like they do for base or like streets and stuff like that, which is not something that gets all muddy. It's more of a compacted soil.
Yeah. But how about a partial encapsulation? You put down individual pads, 10 by 10 or 10 by eight cement pads with pea gravel or crushed rock in between them.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know if that would be legal.
Yeah. Definitely something we need to look into.
And if you in the future want to provide something like the conestoga hut or any kind of other homeless shelter, you would have the pads to put them on.
No, that's a good point, very good, thank you. No, thank you, Lorenzo. Good ideas, very good ideas. Alrighty, any other public comments? Okay, we'll close it to the public comment section of this and we're gonna back up to council. Council, what is recommendations? Not, I'm gonna give a recommendation.
I do wanna hear the rest of the options.
Absolutely, but we're just approving this to go out to bid.
Exactly.
And they don't have to say that after the bids, if we find the other stuff, we're not continuing, not, it's not saying, yes, we're doing this, this is what we're spending, so.
Correct.
And it takes, how long's the bid posted for? Remind me, I forget.
Randy?
How long's the bid, when it goes out to bid, how long's that post for? The bid process?
Cindy.
Cindy? Can you remind me again?
We did reel it back in.
I'm sorry, Cindy. I just, I just forgot how, how long the postings were.
I understand the project, not all the details.
Yeah, exactly, thank you.
I, I believe there's a copy with dates on it and they're tentative, of course, a copy of the RFP in the packet. And it's got tentative dates and again, because every, the goal, as I understand it, has been to move quickly. So I, so I believe.
Oh, on the back page.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. Issue date, statement of interest. Deadline October 14th. Award contract, the 19th.
Okay.
So that's pretty quick.
That is real.
We're still talking about a month before we get any bid and see if anybody bids and that gives us enough time to, I think.
Okay.
Look at the other, but I am, I will defer to that, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and adopt the resolution.
Um, okay, I have a comment.
Sorry.
I just had a question, I'm sorry, Corey, Mr. Mayor, I just had a question for Cindy, if I could.
She left, sorry, she's gone.
Okay, well, maybe Randy or Matt can answer the question. Yes, we, oh, there's Cindy, hi Cindy. If we do start on this path, is this going to preclude us from getting an EPA grant if we're already in process?
I haven't looked into the cleanup grants, Joan, you and I talked about it a little bit last week. I don't know if they would, I don't know if it would be retroactive. I'm not sure how long the process is to apply for a cleanup grant and then wait to get the grant. I don't know if it'd be retroactive and they pay us back for work we've already done to clean up.
Not, not usually, but I'm not sure, we, we kind of need to have that information.
Have to look into it.
Yeah, so once we actually start to process, we might be stuck doing it, but
No, it's a good question, we'll get, should answer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think, I think we're still, so then, anything else, Joan, Smith Freeman?
No, that was, that was my question, you know, if, if we do approve this tonight, can we still go forward and get the grant?
Okay.
To pay us back.
Proving this tonight, we can still do that and still, next meeting, figure out what that means, correct? Mr. Johnson?
The answer to the question is, I don't know.
Right.
If you move forward and approve it tonight and we find out that your approval a grant, we can come back to you and ask you to approve it.
Okay.
And, you know, change that motion.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
Next council, meaning you can move for reconsideration. So you can reconsider that. Then we can work with EDC to get in fact, available for cleanup.
Why we have you here, this is awesome. We, we have so many more options nowadays, it's awesome.
Yes, we could also postpone the vote for two weeks, too.
But if we get that out to the bidding process sooner than sooner the better. I mean, it's, it's, yeah.
There is a lot of work to be done to finalize and put this together, which Cindy still has to do, so.
Yes.
If we find out in the next couple of days that you need to reconsider this, she ain't gonna do it.
She ain't gonna do it, yeah.
So, don't, yeah.
Okay, so we're back to, back to council?
She's afraid to go sit down now.
Don't, yes, they, I wanna stay. So are we back, where are we back, we're back, Corey?
Like I said, he can change it. If we can change it, I just, I, yeah, I think we, I just think we need to move forward. I mean, because we saw install, install, and if we get the answers, then we can just go back and reconsider and revoke the motion and do a different direction. So I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution, authorizing the city to see proposals for the South Foothill Drive Cleanup Project, approving a supplement probation for the capital outlay of 125,000 dollars.
I, Dwayne Keg, make a second on that one. Okay, we'll go to roll call, Joan Smith Freeman.
Well, this is a tough one, but I think Randy cleared that up, that if, if it's, this doesn't, if we find out something different on the grant, then we can go back and change it. So I'll, I'll vote aye.
Corey Middleton?
Aye.
Aye, because we can have a do-over.
Right.
Paul McCoy still not present, see, so, I, Dwayne Keg, aye. So, thank you, and thank you, Cindy, for all the exercising you got.
We appreciate it.
The city does provide an exercise program.
Thank you, Randy, appreciate it, appreciate your time on this, too. All right, we're going to number eight, city manager staff reports.
Do you have any questions on the weekly report that came out? Otherwise, moving forward with the city manager recruitment, we're moving forward with the police chief recruitment, we're moving forward with the finance director recruitment. We have some holdups on the planning director recruitment, we're correcting that and re-recruiting on that one.
Yes.
And that's just Departmentate. Human Resources is also working a ton of appointments for the Public Works Department. And they still have several people, I believe, still out with COVID. So they're really impacted in what they can get done at the moment. Fortunately, we had a scare, the chief left, or I could have blamed him. They had a, a big scare, one of the wives of a police officer in the police department came down with COVID. And that officer had been around everybody else. Not shut down department yet.
Yeah.
And they're testing and it's been no evidence of COVID by the actual officers sworn or the others working in the department. So that's a
Yes, a big blessing. We don't need that right now, officer's out, that's for sure.
We don't need it ever.
We don't need anybody else, as far as city staff goes, period, but especially officers. Officers and firefighters, we don't need any of them out.
That's all I have.
That's all, okay. Any minute your staff or city staff wants to make us any statements?
The, the staff feels they did in the weekly report.
I, and I, and I just wanna add to that again, that I really appreciate those staff reports. As a council, we need, we needed those and it's very enlightening for us to know what's going on with our staff. So thank you again for doing that.
And thank you to the Department heads who are actually putting it together.
Yes, thank you, very much so. Okay, well, then we will move on to councilman's statements. Joan Smith Freeman, I'll let you go first.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, as you know, I'm on my way to the League of California Cities, CalCities Annual Meeting. Last year, there was no annual meeting because of COVID. So this year will be the first one that they've had in two years. And I thank you for your confidence in making me the delegate for our city. And I will also attend the, the League of Cities Board of Directors meeting while I'm down in Sacramento, so that starts tomorrow morning, bright and early. And it goes through Friday afternoon. And so I'll bring back a report from the meeting and wish, yeah, wish me luck.
Great, and thank you for going down and doing that, we appreciate you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Safe, safe from having to do it. Great, anything else, Joan?
No, that's all, I, I just told you what I found out about that EPA grant. So that was the other part of it, I don't think I have anything else, but thank you.
And yeah, thank you for getting that information on the EPA grant, too, thank you.
Hopefully that'll save us a lot of money.
Yes, absolutely, all right, Mr. Milton?
I don't have anything to add. So I'm gonna pass that.
Oh.
Debbie Bear?
I do have something tonight and I'm glad Chief Lemus is still here because it might involve him. So, um, as I was, as we all were discussing about Gold Rush Days, I did, I did have a meeting, a call, a meeting with the downtown merchants and actually had quite a few people there and I presented notes and I wish I would have included some of you with it, but anyway, we have decided that we are wholeheartedly interested in hosting the Gold Rush Days. And we are doing it in partnership with the Siskiyou County Museum because they are a 501(c)(3).
Awesome.
I know, and they can also help us with the insurance needs and that kind of thing. So we will satisfy the city's requirements.
And now this is the downtown merchants, correct?
Downtown merchants.
We, as you were saying, downtown merchants and not we as the council, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I wanted, just wanted to clarify that. I just want, what's wrong, because I'm already too busy.
Yes, yes. Um, so I'm really excited about that, it will be, of course, a one-day event because there's so much going on on Father's Day weekend, anyway. But they, we started discussing some of the events and activities that go on during Gold Rush Days. And someone mentioned that the fire department does a breakfast that time. So somebody will be approaching Chief Lemus regarding if he would be interested in hosting a breakfast. Something to think about, you have until next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, June.
Yeah, yeah, in June. Father's Day weekend, it's the Saturday, so.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah. Yes.
I can't, I can't hear the chief.
Oh, he said yes.
He said yes?
Yes, really, really happy to do it.
Oh, I, I see, well, good for you, chief.
He said, he said he would do anything else we asked him for as far as the Gold Rush Days, putting on all the events in there. He's running now.
I'm excited, when, when I was Executive Director of the Chamber, that the, the firemen came out and they put the cross ladders up across, not on Minor, but on Broadway and hung the flag there, it was awesome.
Very nice.
I remember that.
But I do have more good news.
Oh, good.
Guess who's chairing the event?
You are.
No. And take that back and don't ever put it out there yet. Corey Hayden has agreed to host.
Oh, wonderful.
Lots of experience.
Good experience, good marketing skills, and we appreciate her very much.
Well, her, her baby is due in December, so I think she'll probably have the baby with her.
Yes. So I am letting you know that or will probably be presenting a letter for financial support to get this going, so. There you have it, that's the big cherry on top of the cake to get back to normal.
Yeah.
Oh, that's awesome, that's awesome. I do have, I do have a little something, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I forgot. I had a local Transportation Commission meeting last Tuesday. Not yesterday, but the, we, I mean, yeah, today's Tuesday, we could go today. And we found out at that meeting that there is additional funding coming through. And I think it may be the ARA funding or some type of COVID funding. But there's an additional 1.3 million dollars coming available for roads, for roads projects. And I think Matt and Cindy know about it, I think Cindy was on the Zoom call. I actually went in person, it was down at the stage office and it was a hybrid, some people called in. But that was a nice surprise that, you know, all the funding, usually there's a shortage of funding for all throughout Siskiyou County, right? So this 1.3 million dollars will be in addition to the $900,000 that's already available. So that was, I thought that was really good news and so I'm hoping public work So that was, I thought that was really good news. And so I'm hoping Public Works, Matt, I see that you're on, you're on the line. I'm hoping that Waireka will be right out there looking for any kind of roads funding we can, you know, possibly get.
We are researching that exact thing, yes.
Good, thank you. Because it's kind of gonna be, you know, first come, first served. I know that you guys have a meeting of the, I, what's the name of the committee? It's the users. It's all of the cities have representatives there. And everybody presents their project and it's, it's gotta be a full proposal. And then they vote on it and then it comes back to the local transportation commission. And then we vote on who gets the funding. So if, you know, if we have our, our funding request to them, one of the first ones, then we're more likely to get funding. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. That's good, that's good news.
The Gold Rush Days is, um, this is for chief and I don't want you to come all the way down, but you might have to. When does, you know, I was fortunate enough to take the tour before, when I was elected on the council to come tour the fire department. And, you know, for the new fire hall proposal and, and then museum. Is that, I know it doesn't get open that often, the museum. Is that during Gold Rush Days, do you usually open the museum up? Because I just think that is such a great valuable asset to our community and not, not that many people get to see it. They ask, is it ever open? When's it open? I would love to see it. I looked at the windows, you know. So it will be open then.
Excellent question. Yeah, it will, it will be open. If we have the pancake breakfast, we've always had it open in the past. Going event, shall we say, before all this craziness happened. People from Adam, come in because they had the car show and, and it was a way for firefighters that, or just general interest, people that had interest in it would come by. Had no idea it was even there, so. It's something in the, in the future, probably once Carl Veric retires, he'll probably be our curator. And we'll have to figure out a plan for that. It's one of the things where it's kind of on the back burner that we want to have that available so many hours a week. But you gotta have people that are familiar with the history and, yeah, have it open for a couple hours on a Saturday or, you know, an afternoon here and there would be, you know, something that we should do. We, we're, we get tremendous accolades from it if you haven't seen it yet.
Have you guys been, anybody been?
Ever been into the museum?
Isn't it great?
Oh, you have it?
And there's a lot more things that, you know, that we need to be, you know, probably putting in there and, and doing some different things with it. But yeah, excellent point. Yeah, we'll have it, you bet. That's a, that's a given.
That's awesome. I mean, it's, I was blown away by the history in there and how just everything's so clean. I know, I was really impressed. I was, and yeah, I get asked all the time, is it ever open or when's it open? When can we go in there?
I mean, if, if people do want to go in and, and, you know, I mean, if I'm not busy, I can always give them a, a tour. I can schedule it with Carl too. He, more than, he loves that, so.
I'm hoping one day that, you know, and I'll bring this up at another time and we can all think about it, is in Sacramento, they had a free museum day. And they opened up all the museums free to the public. So that includes, you know, the fire hall, the museum, and even, not even Waireka. It could be a whole Siskiyou County Nationwide Museum Day where it could, you know, it was very popular down there. Kids would line up, go into the fire, you know, the one in Old Sac, the other, the museum down there, the fire hall. And so they had a museum day. And that's something that would be great for our town. And not only just to say Waireka. And just the whole day for Siskiyou County, open up the museum. To get people to know how like we are to have a great museum and also the fire museum up there. So, great.
No, thank, that's, that's a good idea.
Yeah, we did it before, we just haven't had a pancake breakfast.
But we can get it back.
Thank you.
You never know, you might want to sit close.
Yeah, we're not, we're not done talking yet. Oh, by, by the way, chief, I got something for you now. Alrighty, well, then, any, anybody else?
I'm done.
Okay, I'll move on to mine then. And I'll actually, I'll kind of segue into what you said, the events. So last week I met with the, more Siskiyou Chamber. And we had Crystal Styles, Executive Director. We had a conversation about the Night of Lights and the parade. And so I gave her my list of, of things that we did for those events, the Bible. And, and she ran with all the ideas, so she's gonna bring that back and probably present that to us again and what that's gonna look like. But we discussed a lot of different things that we've done in the past. Parade's pretty standard of, and, you know, how you run a parade, but I probably am gonna get reeled into that one, just so you know. So, um, just because of how many times I've put it all on. But anyways, there, you know, we got discussions on different things, the Snow Princess, the Santa's Workshop, Sent Letters to Santa, the different activities, totally different stage activities. If they're talking about presenting, having a stage there, so that might be coming in front of the council too, possibly the use of the stage, of the city stage. We have still, thank goodness. And yeah, we did not get rid of it. We made sure that we didn't get rid of the stage. Anyways, so there's a whole list of things that she's gonna be working on and she's very excited about moving forward on having that event. So it's gonna be, and it will be, like we discussed, on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Historically, and I think, oh, I can't remember now, I think we're up to seventy-four years, I think it was what my note said. We've got to seventy, seventy-three or seventy-four years, I think, for how many years the parade's been going on. Yeah, yeah. And I looked, looked back on my notes and it's been, this year will be exactly ten years since we changed it from a day parade to a night parade. And that was, that was the first year, the, or second year that I put it on.
I remember that. That was fun.
So that was, it was, it was fun and people. Yeah, so it'll be actually the, well, what we discussed is having it right at dusk. Having the parade right at dusk, so that way it transfers right into the night, excuse me, and then going into the Night of Lights. So she's talking about how to present it as like possibly a, a whole day event, possibly, combining the two like we discussed. And making it best of whole day of events, so. Yeah, I'm all for it. I know back in, Joan will, will agree with this. 2012 is when we, the first time, all day, all day event. So kept the night, we actually made it an all-day event and and it was, it was a big success. The only challenges that we had at that time was the merchants on Minor Street. They, we had a lot of merchants that did not like the aspect of being closed all day on that day. So, but there's, it's the challenges that we face, but I think it'll, I think it'll be well-accepted now, hopefully. So we'll see, we'll move on with that, but it's gonna be fun. It's gonna be nice to have some more event going on in Waireka again. You know, it's getting to be, getting to be one of those things that I'm, want to see some events. This is getting frustrating not seeing any fun events. Kind of bummed that we didn't get to see any art walks. I'm not sure what transpired there, but it's kind of bummed out that we didn't have the art walks this, this summer. Maybe we could see that. Moving on, so this month, the last Monday, I went up to Paul McCoy and I and members from the Beacon of Hope went to the Rogue Retreat, which it's a Rogue Retreat and Hope Village. And they have a combination of things. So the Rogue Retreat oversees the urban campsite. Uh, which I was, like I was explaining earlier, the urban campsite is right next door to Ford Dealership on Biddle Road. Adjacent to that, on the other side is their pallet shelters that they do. So they have, I think, a dozen pallet shelters right now that they're doing, right next to it. Then, then they, downtown, then they have the actual homeless shelter that they do. It's inside building, people stay inside, food, all the works in there. And then another location that they have in downtown Medford is their tiny homes that they do. And it's very, this is very well organized. So basically what happens is, is homeless individuals, they go into the urban campsite. If they're well-behaved and everything goes well, then they'll go grad, basically graduate to the pallet shelters. And then from the pallet shelters, they go on to the actual shelter itself. And if everything still keeps progressing positive, in a positive way, then they move on to the tiny homes. And once they get to the tiny homes, the way it's structured on that is they have specific chores they gotta do. There are certain outreaches that they have to do. It's very structured on who can come and go. No one can just come and go as they please. It's structured where they have to, any visitors come in that they have to make basically reservations and let people know that these individuals are coming. In the tiny homes also, they, they have to pay rent, so it's not free. Now, the tiny homes, it starts off like at a very low, it's like eighty-five dollars a month or something for, to rent one of the tiny homes. And then it actually progressively goes up in X amount, another month or two, then it goes up to another increment. And then another month or two, it goes up to another increment and up to like, I think it's six months or so that they will, they feel that once they reach that stage, they've reached a certain point where it's like three hundred dollars a month or something. And they're paying for their laundry. It's a coin-operated laundry service and stuff that they do. Um, they feel at that point, then they would graduate to the next level, which would be out on their own and hopefully getting to some low-income housing or something of that sort. So the way they have it structured is very secured, very, it's, it's very well organized, very organized. The people that go into the urban campsite are only there under the recommendation of the law enforcement, so the police station. The chief of police and the policeman. And when they're at the urban campsite, they can only come and go with, say after hours, it's a after like nine o'clock, whatever, when they close, eight o'clock, nine o'clock, when they close the urban campsite. They can only leave, they can leave if they want, but they can't come back without law enforcement bringing them or something of that sort. So it's very well structured, I said, very well done up. And they also have the support of the businesses. So the Ford Dealership that's next door absolutely supports them. The city council was really apprehensive at first on supporting this whole venture of, of the Rogue Retreat. And once they got it up and going, now the city council in Medford supports them in every avenue. They say, if you guys want to add on to the urban campsite, we're all for it. If you want to have another location, we're all for it. They gave them a hundred and ten percent to move forward on any, any other ventures that they want to do through the Rogue Retreat. So it's very, like I said, very well structured. And then I need to talk to Mr. Johnson. I briefly spoke with Chief Gilman, that I would like Chief Gilman and I, and possibly you or whoever at the time may be, whatever that timing may be, um, to go up to, to there and do a tour. And also for Chief Gilman to actually talk to the chief up there. So he's supposed to be making the arrangements to make, set up a meeting with the chief up there of police in Medford. So they know what, what their guidelines have been and stuff like that and what the pros and cons that they have to deal with too. So it's, like I said, it's been very enlightening on the whole situation, the way they have it structured and stuff. And we're actually, believe it or not, um, once we get it up and going, we're gonna be miles ahead on some aspects. And they are because they have all these different locations that they're presenting. We will have our urban campsite right there. Maybe we, and I did, oh, this is another thing I need to share with the council, that there might actually be a grant that we're looking into through behavioral health, through the county, that might supply us with pallet shelters also. So we're actually looking into that. There's a good chance that we can get some pallet shelters. Uh, we just gotta look at how the grants, stipulations of grant, but it looks, looks pretty positive that we might be able to get some grant money for, by, for getting pallet shelters too. So, um, second on, and so we'll have, what puts us a little bit above the Rogue Retreat is that we'll have the urban campsite, possibly pallet shelters and the shelter right there, all in one location. And, um, and yes, it probably would be beneficial if we had something else too, and that would be great. And I'll let you add to that if you want to. But this is, is really beneficial for organizing this sort of thing because they have all these different locations. It takes a lot more manpower, a lot more time and energy to have all these different locations versus what we could have in one location. Only thing I would say is if we do down the road, if we ever ended up doing tiny homes, which there's a good chance that we could get funding for that in the future too, a very good chance. That the tiny homes might be better suited someplace else because these are, the way they have the structure of the tiny homes, they want to be separated from anything that might pull them back in. Oh, here's a little success story real quick. One of the individuals that was at the urban campsite originally. This gal kept getting kicked out of the urban campsite and the pallet shelter thing. She was, was not doing the rules, wasn't following the rules, got kicked out about six different times. Well, she straightened up her act finally, everything's doing good. And when we went and did the tour, she was actually in the tiny homes and was about ready to make the next transaction, transition from tiny homes into low-income housing and stuff. So she, she graduated that much through this last six months that she has now gotten off drugs. She's clean and sober for the last six months, she's been clean and sober and straightened up everything. And she's on the path to a better life. So it's, it's awesome to see a success story like that firsthand. We got to see that. And she was there, we got to talk to her. She was doing chores there at the tiny homes after the chores. She was doing chores around there and it's, it's really clean. The tiny home also, area also has a community garden that they do. So that's really cool to see that they're doing a community garden also. But there's a lot of different things that they're, and it's actually self-run. So the, the tiny home area is actually self-run. The, the citizens or the people that live in this tiny home area actually run it. So they take turns on who mans the gate. And like I said, anybody that comes and goes, they have to have an appointment. They can't just come and go as they please. It's still very structured and it's all self-run. So in a, in a situation like that where it's self-run, that cuts down on obviously the staff and manpower that has to go there. So there's a lot of cool things. The Beacon of Hope was totally jazzed about this, on being able to move forward. And with, in conjunction now with the Beacon of Hope, I just want to let people know that they're, they'll be planning a workday here soon too. And I'll, next city councilman, I'll let people know when that workday is. They con, they persuaded me, I should say, into doing a whole bunch of work now inside the, the shelter, so, which is good. That's what I do. So I'm very excited on helping them out and moving forward on the shelter, so. Did you have a comment?
I do. May I?
Okay, go ahead.
I, I, another part of my report that I forgot, I apologize. So after the local transportation commission meeting, I serve on that with Supervisor Ed Valenzuela. And I think that you're all aware of the fact that Ed Valenzuela is the incoming president of CSAC, the California State Association of Counties. And Ed talked to me and asked me if I would have you give him a call because he knows of funding that's available and he wants to set up a meeting with you and Sarah Collard and himself and figure out exactly what we need. And I love this story about what they're doing in Oregon up there because possibly that's something that we can do. I know at the back piece of our property, there's a piece of county property that's up there by the railroad tracks. Uh, and, you know, we might be able to partner with the county on that and then find the funding to help get this thing off the ground. And I love the idea of, of the urban campsite, the Beacon of Hope. And then possibly if the county put in tiny houses up on that, that kind of narrow strip up at the uh, back of the property. And Ed was most interested in that. So I will forward you, if that's okay, his phone number, his cell number. And you can get ahold of him because he really wants to talk to you. He thinks, he knows that there's money available and he's the incoming president of the whole state of all the counties. I'm pretty sure he can help you get the money. He can help us get the money.
Well, that's good news. Thank you, Joan.
Sure, I almost forgot it too, geez.
Thank you.
I'll forward it to you right now.
Alright, thank you, Joan. Okay, well, that's good, that's good news all the way around there. So I'll, I'll move on because I know everybody's getting anxious to leave. I also had a meeting today on the point-in-time meeting, in conjunction to the seven counties of the North State. So we're starting the process of doing the point-in-time in January. We started working on the sheets, tally sheets on how to count the individuals for the point-in-time. So that'll be an upcoming thing that we'll have to talk about in the future and getting volunteers and whatnot. The, let's see, what else would we have? Yeah, and my phone is very active. And anyways, the only other thing I'd like to talk about with the council And um anyways, the only other thing I'd like to talk about with the council and with uh Mr. Johnson. Is I know we discussed a while back um doing a traffic study. And I know, I don't think anything was ever done.
For what area?
Um, well, I think that's what we need to identify as those areas. Um, I know we had discussion about it. Um, and I don't know if we ever identified those areas, so I'd like to have something brought up on the agenda, if it was, is okay with the council. To discuss possible locations for where the traffic study needs to be done. Obviously, we've had numerous um complaints on Brew Street going up to the hospital. That's been huge.
Minor in Oregon.
And Oregon is another huge problem. And I know there's a lot of other locations. There's a couple up by my house too that's bad and whatnot too. So um, if that's, if that's okay with the council, I'd like to bring that up on a future agenda. Yes, no, maybe?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Sure, sounds good. Um, I know that sometimes uh Minor Street, Cory can talk about this. But Minor Street sometimes because ki, becomes kind of a racetrack, doesn't it Cory? People go fast.
Yeah. Try, try Oregon Street.
Can't hear you. You turned off.
I said, yeah, I said, it's, it's coming down that hill. Boy, you can catch yourself going forty miles an hour with not even realizing it.
Are you saying you do that?
In his new car.
Hey, at the moment. But yeah, I'd say come pretty fast down that hill. Um, you know.
That's the way it is. On Yalma's, or see, on, on Oregon Street down by my house, going to NorCal. They just, they, they see how fast they can go. They had, actually, uh, Y P D had one of those um speed check radar things. There, well, it's been about four year ago, uh, five years ago, when I was, just got on city council, cause I was complaining about it. And I would sit there and watch, and I seen one individual going down Oregon Street fifty miles an hour.
Wow.
Yeah, I watched it.
I don't know that I've ever seen the speed sign on Oregon Avenue. Have you? I'm serious. I've never seen the speed sign.
On Oregon Street? What do you mean speeds? What does mean a speed?
Oh, you mean like thirty-five or twenty-five or something like that?
Oh, posted speed limit, and you're right. I don't think there is any place.
We need one.
Yeah, well, the, the police has had, oh, you know, trailer out there on Minor Street for a few days. And you know, you're following people and it's red, cause people can start zooming up the hill.
Yes.
Um, coming down the hill, I think we going off constantly. Why, speaking of Minor Street too, real quick, I keep. Every day I go by the skateboard park and, you know, we've talked about this and everything. It is getting used so much.
It is, it is.
I believe it increased the, the children using it for, you know, their bikes and skate, skateboards. It is packed.
It is.
So if one thing I ever accomplished in my four years of sitting here, you know, I don't know. We'll see if I speak a second term, but I don't know. As long as it was away, three years. If anything I could have said, you know, I'm proud of and hope we can do something bigger, is that it brings a smile to my face every, I pass that.
Absolutely.
It has been used so much. And we, and we almost lost it. We almost had it taken out. And I put my foot down and everybody supported me and community and everybody's sitting here, so I appreciate it. But yeah, driving by, speaking of Minor Street, just driving by, it's like, wow, look at all the kids out here. It is crazy.
I see it all the time, yeah.
So that's the show, you know, down the road, we'll probably look at making it bigger because it's out of rooms, we're out of room, it's used.
Yeah.
So, anyway, sorry.
Wow, that's great. Miss, Mr. Mayor, our attorney has his hand up.
Oh.
Oh, yes.
I did, I just wanted to make sure that you have in mind um what the purpose of traffic surveys are. And um, you're kind of bound by the result of the traffic survey. And if it's an area where you think people are going too fast and the prevailing traffic is going too fast. Then you have to raise the speed limit.
Oh.
So, uh, just wanted you to know that.
Oh my gosh.
So yeah, if we do any traffic studies that would pertain to speed limits on those areas, yes, he's, he's very right. I've been, I've been uh yelled at for that too, because we gotta be careful on what we do on that. Because it could possibly raise the speed limit on Oregon Street if we do a study on the speed.
Okay, so can't, can't we just post a sign without doing that kind of a survey on Oregon?
There you go.
No, you can, you can definitely um, you know, set speed limits uh that you think are reasonable for, for places. And the, the time that you endanger those set speed limits are when you do a traffic study.
Okay.
That's valuable.
Yes.
I can't hear.
Is your mic on?
No, I thought it was done.
Now, okay.
You're required to do these traffic surveys uh periodically anyway, to justify the speed limits you set. And the reason for that is cities used to have speed traps. And so those needed to go away, and this was the state's answer. You do these surveys and those are. And if you want to request a certain area or something like that, that can be done. But in reality, I probably would tell you that Public Works is doing the city every couple of years. Just because you're required to.
No, not that I know of. It's never been, has it been presented to any of you on council? It's never been presented to me that there's been any.
On Oregon Avenue?
On any of it.
Um, I think there was, I, yeah, there was one done, and I'm trying to remember what area for what. Joan, do you remember?
You, I remember what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
You, you wouldn't be getting any recommendations unless they were gonna change a speed limit. So if the speed limit study just said it was validated.
Okay. Yeah, and that's, that's just very true. That's why we're, on the future agenda. I'm not saying does it necessarily be next agenda, but in this near future.
Before the end of the year.
Probably they have.
We are in a frantic pace and I can't figure out why we're so frenzied over.
The adrenaline rush is awesome.
You sure you don't want to workshop on this?
No, no, thank you.
No.
I would, um, I would. I would like to, something that, if, if it can be done, I would like something to be done before we start all this road construction and stuff. Because if when Oregon Street starts, we start doing road construction on Main Street, Oregon Street's gonna be the new Main Street. And we need to be able to address these situations as quickly as possible on that. That's why I'm bringing it up, because there will be a heavy flow of traffic on Oregon Street. Exactly. And my luck, be me that needs to go to the hospital.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it's Matthew Bray, Director of Public Works.
Yes.
Um, there were previous discussions and uh staff was working toward bringing up a traffic engineer. Which is a uh employee of Pace Engineering to uh possibly not workshop this. But to come up and discuss with council the ins and outs of a traffic study as our city attorney spoke to. Um, just so we are all on the same page of legalities and the requirements of said survey. Um, and we could bring that back if, if that's what you're looking for.
Well, yeah, something to, to, yeah, present to us, that would be great. Um, I just don't want to put on the back burner. That I know we've discussed doing traffic studies on some of these areas, and this is not like it's a new thing. So it's been going on for quite a while. We've had this discussion about traffic studies and, and some of these key areas. And um, it's just interesting, cause they, especially going back to the hospital and up into that area. You know, the hospital's working on some type of expansion up there too. And this, and more traffic. And I don't know if anything, if the traffic study was ever even done after they did the clinic across the street. I don't remember ever seeing or hearing anything about a traffic study being done when they did this clinic across the street. And all that extra traffic that was presented at that point in time. So I think we're well overdue on some of these areas. So. But yes, Mr. Bray, I would like, much like to see something brought back to us.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Dawn, are you still listening?
Yes, I am.
So, uh, do we, and I know you, I, the mayor wants a traffic study. I'm fine with that. But uh procedurally speaking, do you have to do a traffic study? Or can we just request because we want a four-way stop there? Because of safety issues in our um state of mind, we think it would make the intersection uh safer?
Absolutely, you can do that.
Okay, so why?
So why, what was, what's the benefit of doing a traffic study then? If we can, if we can have that. And this is, this is kind of new to me, because we requested to place, and we've always been told that we have to do a traffic study. So why now? Is it something different?
So that we can change it to fifty miles an hour?
Dawn, I think that question was for you.
Was it?
Yes, sir.
Um, I don't know what you've been told in the past. Um, I've seen numerous city councils decide to put four-way stops. At places they think it needs it, and I've never seen it questioned. So um, I've never legally researched it. I think that it's a valid um uh thing that you have the authority to do. And maybe the city manager has a different opinion.
Isn't our traffic study committee, is it, doesn't that consist of the city manager, uh, the director of public works? And the chief of police, correct? Matt?
Okay, then.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
I, I have no idea what the traffic committee is composed of, but if I'm on it, I'm on it. Um, in fact, your question, there's a whole series of warrants that are normally, you have to meet to put in stop signs, to put in other things like that. Otherwise, yeah, well, the police can't write tickets. You have to get a speed that is allegedly correct and show that to the court. Uh, so the judge, in fact, can enforce the speed limits and things of that nature. That's why you do these traffic surveys. If you haven't done it a while, you did it at one point in time. Or the police just don't write tickets.
Yeah, and I've, I've actually seen that happen as well. Um, for instance, Delnart County had an area. Where the residents wanted the speed limit to be forty-five. They did a traffic study that showed that the prevailing speed limit was fifty-five. And they just simply left the forty-five signs up and the C H P don't uh, don't write tickets there.
So I guess at this stage, um, I guess just bring it back and we'll have further discussion on this, I guess would be the most acceptable thing, don't you think, council?
I don't know. I like the power of putting in a four-way stop ourselves.
I mean, that's, if in fact, there's a committee that's supposed to look into that more.
There is, there is. And I was pretty sure it was the city manager, uh, the public works director and the chief of police. Isn't that not correct, Matt? Matt, are you still like?
Yes, I am. In, in the past, you are correct. That was the three of us, including the maintenance and operations manager. That would meet, meet to discuss, it was an informal committee. Um, that would discuss all public works issues, police issues, engineering issues. Um, personally, I. I had ideas of areas in town, which I thought would require four-way stops. And it would meet the warrants that uh Mr. Johnson speaks to. And that's why the discussion a year or two ago uh went to. Getting in a traffic engineer to come up and explain the ins and outs that I spoke to earlier. There are a mu, there's a lot of legalities there. Um, re, re, speaking to the warrants, which are the numbers of accidents. That cause fatalities in an intersection. Um, and as, as the city attorney spoke to the, he, he was speaking to the eighty-fifth percentile. Um, if traffic is moving along at a steady clip and there are not a number of accidents. We're legally bound to set the speed limit higher. So, but, but that was the discussion uh last year or the year before about bringing Pace up to explain it to all of us. So we could all understand.
Discussing, yeah, I think we need to bring this back up for, cause we're, we can debate all night on what procedure needs to be done and whatnot. So I think it needs to be brought up on a city council meeting to where we can see.
Right.
Where.
And have Pace there, yeah.
So, what do you need to ask, Mr. Johnson?
I don't think they can hear you.
Oops, I'm sorry. I think it needs to be brought back on a city council meeting, cause we can discuss this all night. Um, but there needs to be definitely some further discussions on how to proceed forward.
We'll check with the traffic engineer from, from Pace and find out how long his presentation takes.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, if it's three or four hours, we'll shoot him, but.
Can you say that?
Police chief said that. We'll find out how long it takes, and if it's a reasonable amount of time, we'll get it on.
Okay.
The first council meeting that's available.
Okay, great, thank you. Alrighty, um, I'm, that's all I had, so I'm gonna say meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Bye.
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 Good luck, thank you.
You, thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, Dawn, thank you.